Okay. First order of business will be a pledge of allegiance to our flag. We are honored to have American Legion Post 21 to lead us in the pledge. So, American Legion Post, I'll let you perform.
Yeah, come on.
Come on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Thank you Legion Post 21 for your service and for the pledge of allegiance tonight. Next will be our invocation given by Reverend Larry Britt, the Morganton Public Safety Chaplain. Larry, welcome.
Thank you. I understand there's a picture that I'm supposed to speak to? Ah, it's a little grainy. I'm a legacy member of the American Legion, all right? Because this picture is from the founding caucus of the Legion in Paris on March the 15th, 1919. I'll have to move. This gentleman right here is my wife's grandfather. And you'd better believe that when I started dating his granddaughter, he wanted to know if I was a member of the Legion. Thankfully, I was, so I was allowed to stay in the family. And I'm very happy for that. So, let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for bringing us in safety to this day. We thank you for giving this nation to us, and we thank you for giving us brave women and men who are willing to defend this great land with, if necessary, their lives. We remember especially those people who founded the American Legion 100 years ago this year, and we thank you for the people who continue to carry the banner of freedom. Help us to live up to the high standards our ancestors set for us in 1919 and before, and lead us to move forward in the light of those standards that those standards provide. God, our deliberations here this evening, grant that what we do here will be to the benefit of your people and to the glory of your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Larry. Next on our agenda is the presentation of service pins. Yeah, we may ought to introduce the council since we don't have nameplates. To my far right, Wendy Cato, a member of City Council, Forrest Fleming, our mayor pro temp, Louie Veen, our city attorney, I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor, Sally Sandy, our city manager, Sidney Simmons, City Council, Chris Hawkins, City Council, Kelly Russell, our recording secretary, and I think Becky Brinkley is our interpreter for the deaf. Thank you, Louie. For service pins, our first service pin is Bart Chapman, who was an underground services supervisor in electric department for 20 years. Wendy, do you have that service pin? We'll ask Bart to come forward, please.
You don't look old enough to be 20 years with us. Thank you for all you've done in your service with the electric department and been out there in the danger too. So, 20 years is a good time.
Oh, yeah. Not many more to go.
Do you want to say?
Bart.
Okay.
Bart, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Will Lackey, a lieutenant for public safety for 20 years, Chris Hawkins. Will, if you'll come forward. Where is Will? There he is.
We've known each other for a lot of years.
It's been a month.
Thank you so much for 20 years of serving and protecting the citizens of Morganton, and I hope you'll go at least 20 more. Congratulations.
I'd just like to thank everyone for the opportunity to, being allowed to serve here. It's a great place to work, a great community area around as far as Burke County goes, plenty of opportunity. You've got young kids, which I did at one point in time. Now, they're both driving, so it kind of makes me feel a little bit older. Hence, you're not getting another 20, you'll get about 10.
Thank you, Will. We have Robin Lackey, a lieutenant with public safety for 20 years. Robin Triple, excuse me. Forrest, will you present that? Do you have that one?
Congratulations, Lieutenant, for 20 years of service. We appreciate it very much. Be careful.
Yes, sir. Just like to say thank you, and I've enjoyed being here for the past 20 years and looking forward to the next about five and a half months. But thank you for the opportunities I've had here and all the good friendships and all the things I've been able to experience here.
Thank you, Rob. Next, we have Ronnie Rector, our chief of public safety for 25 years. I'll ask Sidney Simmons to make that presentation.
Chief, we appreciate your service. You got it on a downhill drag now.
I don't know what's scarier, the fact that most of the people at public safety haven't been alive as long as I've been at public safety, or how old I'm will be by the time they retire. But it's been an honor to serve in a capacity that I love with a great group of men and women that truly have service in their heart and for a community that is arguably the best community in North Carolina. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Chief. Next on our agenda are public advocacy, some announcements. Actually, we have a proclamation that will be our first announcement. This is a proclamation for the 100th anniversary of the American Legion. I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas the American Legion has been a staunch advocate for veterans and their families since 1919, and whereas the American Legion was founded on the four pillars of care for veterans, a strong national offense, Americanism, and children and youth, and whereas the American Legion has played a leading role in initiatives and breakthroughs that have affected the lives of Americans in every community, from U.S. Flag Code to the G.I. Bill, and whereas Morganton Post 21 has fulfilled the Legion's mission since August 1919 through programs such as Post 21 Baseball since 1925, the First Legion Lady Fast Pitch Softball Team in the state, which has spurred the creation of over 40 other teams, and whereas Morganton Post 21 also fulfills the Legion's mission by sending care packages to actively deployed units from western North Carolina, and whereas the American Legion is celebrating its centennial in 2018-19, and Post 21 is celebrating its own centennial in 2019. Now, therefore, our Ronnie Thompson, mayor of the city of Morganton, to hereby proclaim the month of August as a month to commemorate American Legion Post 21's centenary, and witness thereof, Ronnie Thompson, mayor, Sally Sandy, city clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Forrest, if you'll present that, we'll have Commander Stosh Wrigley coming forward, please.
Congratulations. You guys have a great organization, and we appreciate you greatly. Please accept this from the city of Morganton. We appreciate your service, sir.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you, mayor, and the council from the whole Post 21, and we're glad to have any new members that would like to join. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution of support for Foothills Conservancy and the Oak Hill Community Park and Forest Project. Whereas in December 2018, Foothills Conservancy entered into a purchase option with Caldwell Timber Properties to acquire 651 acres in Oak Hill for conservation as a future community park and forest for recreation, education, community agriculture, and other public uses for the citizens of Morganton and Burke County with a total project cost of $3.1 million. And whereas the citizens of the city of Morganton and Burke County have expressed strong support for the protection of the property for a future public park and forest and for its multiple public benefits for future generations, and whereas in February 2019, Foothills submitted a Clean Water Management Trust Fund grant application requesting $1.2 million of state funds toward purchase and acquisition of the property, and whereas by June 2019, Foothills received private fund pledges totaling $585,000 as a portion of privately sourced matching funds, and whereas the North Carolina Highway 126 along Freedom Park High School is the National Park Service Over Victory Mountain Trail Commemorative Auto Route and beginning point west of the historic colonial era, Yellow Mountain Road, and whereas the project will proceed at least three miles of surface water, including one mile of Canoe Creek, which is an impaired stream on the North Carolina Division of Water Quality's 303rd list, and repair and buffer conservation is an important strategy to protect the Canoe Creek and Catawba River watershed from further degradation, and whereas the city of Morganton has a long history of exceptional recreation programs and fully endorses the preservation of natural recreational space, and whereas the city of Morganton recognizes the benefits of enhanced tourism opportunities throughout Burke County, and whereas the city of Morganton supports the future development of the property as a community park and forest. Now, therefore, our Ronnie Thompson, mayor of the city, resolved, and the city of Morganton strongly supports any and all Foothills Conservancy grant application for state, federal, and private funding for the Oak Hill Community Park and Forest Project, and recommends that CWMTF grant funding for Foothills by the state's Clean Water Board of Trustees, and recognizes the Oak Hill Community Park and Forest effort as a benefit to the citizens of Morganton and Burke County and tourists and visitors to the area in conjunction with the city of Morganton's Nature's Playground branding as a potential future connection opportunity and complement to the city's parks and recreation system. Adopted this 5th day of August, Ronnie Thompson, mayor, Sally Sandy, city clerk, do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll ask Wendy Cato to present that. I believe Andrew Coto's here. If he'll come forward.
Thank you very much. I think you covered it all in the resolution. I'm Andrew Coto. I'm the executive director of Foothills Conservancy of North Carolina, and on behalf of the conservancy, I want to thank the city of Morganton and city council members for supporting our land trust effort to secure the Oak Hill property for permanent conservation as a future passive recreation park. Our vision for the 660-acre property is for it to become shared community open space with outdoor recreation, nature-based, and agricultural activities, and outdoor education opportunities that will improve the quality of life for our residents and offer unique educational experiences for our schoolchildren. We hope it will become a magnet for visitors and tourists and help attract new businesses and industry, thus adding economic value to our city and county for years to come. The success of this project initially depends on our land trust's ability to raise $3.1 million to purchase the property by the end of 2019. We have received overwhelmingly positive support from the community. Over 500 people have signed an online petition, and over 100 people have posted positive comments on our website in favor of this project. We have raised $600,000 in private pledges or donations toward our acquisition of the property, but we have $2.5 million more to raise. Again, thank you for the city's support, which is very important as our land trust continues to apply for grant funds to acquire the property. I look forward to a long-term partnership between Foothills Conservancy and the city of Morganton to make this unique park project a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next on our agenda is a presentation from the North Carolina Chapter of American Planning
Association. I'm personally really excited about the Oak Hill Park.
I think they're going to play the video.
Andrew, we're going to play the video. Being a father, being a family man, you know, when I get off of work at home, instead of having to drive 30 minutes to an hour possibly to get out to these, you know, already wonderful places we have here in Burke County area, you know, five minutes from my front door, I can drive over to the Oak Hill Park. My kids can get out, get their energy out, and enjoy nature. We can have these experiences together as a family, and it's just exciting to think about. You know, my wife can take the kids during the day and have a place where they can go, you know, play in the creek, go ride their bikes and explore, and just enjoy nature. The potential of the property will offer a multitude of uses, from creating miles of new hiking and mountain biking trails, outdoor educational opportunities, and even cooperative farming spaces for the community. Also, not to mention the economic impact the park will have too, from boosting our tourism dollars flowing through our local businesses, and even expanding the attractiveness of our town for companies looking to locate to a place that offers a great quality of life for their employees. The possibility of Oak Hill Park, it just enriches the community here in Burke County. But there isn't much time to protect this amazing property. If we're not able to raise enough funds to help buy the property by the end of the year, it could be lost forever. But with community support, we can help the Foothills Conservancy protect this property for the enjoyment of ourselves and many generations to come. So, let's keep this special property open to all and give every person in our community a place to enjoy nature's playground.
Great video. Thank you, Andrew. Next, we have a presentation from the North Carolina Chapter of American Planning Association. Philip, I believe you're going to do this presentation?
I am. I am representing the North Carolina Chapter of American Planning Association tonight. And what I wanted to do is talk to you on, and on the screen you will see, the initiative is the Great Places in North Carolina, and I wanted to read a little bit from, just to kind of tell you what that is. And it is an awards program created in 2012 to highlight North Carolina's great places and the communities and people that have created them. North Carolina is full of amazing places that make this state a wonderful place to live, bring important money and jobs to our economy, and to keep our communities thriving. Many people work hard to create, sustain, and improve these places, including citizens, planners, business leaders, and elected officials. This is a chance for everyone to celebrate together. Join us as we celebrate these great achievements for our communities. And the awards categories that they have or that we have are Great Street, Great Street in the Making, and then the award that we're here to talk about tonight, which is Great Transformation. And Great Transformations include places that have been re-energized, whether a shopping mall that's been retrofitted into a mixed-use community, an abandoned industrial area transformed into artist's loss, or a recently rejuvenated neighborhood. What you see in front of you, we also have a great historic rehabilitation and a great place for public art. What you see on the screen is the project that we have before us tonight, that we actually, the city of Morganton and Airly Properties actually won the award for, which is Transformation or transformative project. This is the Alpine Mill. And this was a photograph that was found in an estate sale by one of our illustrious staff members, Michael Burley, this weekend. But it shows the mill, and when you read through the nomination, what you, the words are that Alpine Mill was an abandoned furniture plant that had been defunct for decades. It was constructed in 1949, and the building was later designated as a national historic landmark because of its prominence in the once-thriving local furniture industry. Well, you see on this picture that it was thriving as a local furniture industry. And then I'm going to, this is, what we wanted to do is to show that, you know, this is, for as long as I can remember, driving into Morganton, this is the site that you saw, and you see in the background the Alpine Mill. And this was, this is the gateway into downtown. And here's some of the photographs that you see. This is, this was looking straight into the project. This is from the side view. And then we wanted to talk about Mission 2030, Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And this was a project, and here's, this is an excerpt from the plan. This was a project that was contemplated in that Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And then, and that development plan adopted by the city of Morganton to lay out a vision for economic success through excellence in zoning, planning, and investment aided the development of the project's design. And this is one of Mission 2030's shining success stories. Another contributing factor to this was the DIG grant, or the Development Incentive Grant, that came through the Mission 2030 plan. And this project, as you will recall, was approved by both the city and Burke County for inclusion in that grant program. And between that and the significant financial investment by Airly Properties and the national and state historic tax credits created the financial plan that made this project possible. And I just wanted to go through some photographs here. This is the project during construction. You can see how they, there were a lot of windows added where it was originally blank walls. This is the side from Green Street as you look at the hoop truss portion of the building. And this is actually the railroad side of the building where the, with the windows installed. And then I want you to look at what the building looked at. This is what it looked like after it was cleaned up. If you had gone in there, Jenny actually took us in there prior to any work being done, and this was actually transformative just to see this as it was cleaned up. And then here's what it looks like today. There's a kitchen in one of the apartments, hallway. And then this is a rendering of what a proposed piece of artwork will look like in the front yard of the property. And then I want to leave you with what the project looks like today as completed. And what I would say about it is, not only was the building transformed, but the entrance, the gateway to the southern end of our downtown was transformed. This is what you see now as opposed to a building that looked pretty bad. So, with that, what I would like to do is call up, and we have Senator Warren Daniels here in the audience to congratulate Airly and Jenny Irwin as a representative of Airly Properties. And I would like to present Jenny with this plaque from the North Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association, and as winning the transformative project for the state of North Carolina.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jenny, would you like to say something?
Sure. I will say that I affirm the APA of North Carolina in saying that Morganton is indeed a great place, and it's getting better all the time. And thank y'all for your foresight, you know, apart from these mission plans that you all are, you know, very tedious processes you labor over them, you know, you wouldn't be creating, you know, the roads that we all walk on, you know? We're, it's easy to take a plan and bring it to life. And so, thank you very much for all you do. I can't take credit for any of this apart from God's blessing and so many who have helped. I know that Sharon and I think Sanjo, many have called it an eyesore, which I totally affirm, and I will say it's only partially an eyesore now. But just so you know, we fully expect to finish a 40-key boutique hotel next year in the spinning room, and then the first floor of the three-story will be hopefully a restaurant and some other service-oriented business as well as some residential mini storage in the back. And so, apart from DIG, apart from historic tax credits, apart from your partnerships, this would not have happened. And so, on behalf of Morganton, I raise this plaque and proudly present it to us as a community because we did it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our advocacy agenda is a TOS update. Catherine Irving.
I don't think Catherine's here.
Let me just say, there is a scavenger hunt on this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 for individuals, teams, and families. You can register at TOSstudios.org. It sounds like you can ride a bike, you can skate, you can do the skateboard. It should be an interesting, at Catawba Meadows, not downtown, it's at Catawba Meadows, and it should be a lot of fun for families and individuals. Upcoming events at Kama, we have the Jacksons on Thursday, September the 5th at 7:30. We have Coffee with a Cop at Bojangles on North Green Street Tuesday, August 20th at 8:00 a.m., and our Downtown Farmer's Market on Wednesday on North Green Street and Saturday on Beach Street. And our Historic Morganton Festival will be September 6th and 7th. So, everybody is excited about thousands of people coming to town. Yes. I'd like to call Bev Kimmon forward, please. Bev is a visitor who arrived into town about five minutes before we started this city council meeting. She's got a very special project that we are honored to have come to Morganton, North Carolina. Bev, would you make your presentation?
Yes. I have the 9/11 World Trade Center Memorial Quilt Project. It has all the names, it's 300 quilt panels that have all the names of the victims from 9/11, the Twin Towers, the Pentagon, and the plane crash in Pennsylvania. We're going to be at the Colette Center Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Admission is free, correct? Donations accepted?
Yes.
But it's 300 different panels. I've seen it online, it's really amazing.
Yes. And there were, the lady that started it passed away before it got finished. She received 20,000 blocks from 30 different countries.
So, it is truly amazing. We thank you for your drive today. I understand it's been a long drive from up north.
Yes.
Thank you. And it will end up in New York, the final destination, correct?
At some time, at some point in time, yes.
So, thank you so much for sharing it with the city of Morganton. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
And we have Greg Branch, if he'll come forward to make a presentation.
Just wanting to kind of tell everybody about the ACC Network on Compass Cable. As you recall, back in budget process, we asked for an increase in our digital basic, which was where we hoped to have put the ACC Network. And after the final contract with the NCTC, which is our co-op, we are unable to put it there. They're requesting to put it in the analog basic portion of our channel lineup, which we do not have any channels. And so, we are in negotiations currently trying to figure out where we're going to put the ACC Network. It's our intention to launch the ACC Network on August the 22nd, but we have been referred to ESPN, which is responsible for the ACC Network, and hoping maybe we can move one of their lower-penetrated channels to our digital basic. There's several of them, and of course, they want it in our most tiered, our highly-populated tier because it's more money for them. And so, we're hoping maybe that they'll move one of their lower-tiered channels to the digital basic. They're still going to get money, just not as much. You figure we have 600 and some digital basic customers, and you've got 2,500 of our basic subscribers, so that's, if you multiply that by the cost of the channel, it's a whole lot more money for them to put it in our basic service. So, we're trying to negotiate that with them. And we've, I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention because August the 22nd is coming soon, and we will not have another council meeting, and more than likely won't be able to have any other kind of meeting with Cable Commission or anything like that. We're going to have to make a decision and move forward. And we had planned for that increase in January, so it wasn't like it was going to happen right now. But if you take 600 customers by, and the difference of 2,500 customers, and you multiply that by the $2 that we're looking close to paying, it's considerable amount of budget difference. So, we've got to figure out how we make up those differences as well. So, just wanted to report that to everybody because we're getting calls about the ACC Network, and our plan is to launch it. It's just...
But we are at their mercy.
We are at their mercy right now, so... And that's another downfall for being analog. We don't have a certain spectrum. If we were completely digital, and we're working towards that, the channel placement wouldn't be as bad of a problem either. So, just wanted to kind of give you an update on that. You may get some calls, but we wanted to let you know that we're trying real hard to make sure we get the ACC Network.
Thank you, Greg.
Yep.
Next on our agenda is consideration of changing the city council meeting date for September 2019. Sally?
City Hall will be closed on Monday, Sep.
City Hall will be closed on Monday, September 2nd to observe Labor Day. So we are asking that you move our September meeting to Monday, September 9th.
And crash will be picked up a day late?
Yes.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Motion to change the city council meeting date from September 2nd, 2019, to September 9th.
Have a motion to have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Sally, anything on municipal power agenda?
Yes. The annual meeting for the Electricities Organization is happening later this month. And just report to you that the city will have representation there.
Next, we have a consent agenda. I believe we have seven items. Sally?
We do. Would ask that you consider those items in a single motion unless someone would like an item removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, those seven items include two sets of minutes, the regular meeting on June 3rd, and a special meeting on June 17th. A budget amendment in the amount of $5,090. Actually, two amendments to remove that money from the Capital Projects Fund and place it back into the Sewer Operational Fund. Those were some savings that we had in our secondary clarifier project. Would also ask you to approve a budget amendment to receive $30,000. That money comes from two sources. And it is for the purpose of conducting a feasibility study for a children's discovery center in Morganton. $15,000 of that comes from a Main Street grant. And $15,000 of that comes from a private donation from Linda and Eddie Wall. Would also ask you to consider a third amendment to the Sprint Cell Tower License Agreement, which is for installations on the Glen Alpine Water Tank. And this is just the regular renewal of that contract for another rental period. Additionally, would ask that you approve a reclassification for a job in Compass, taking a Compass Service Tech position and reclassifying that to a Lead Customer Service Specialist Position. Would ask approval for our participation in the Western Piedmont Council of Government Stormwater Partnership. We have done that for quite a few years. We have budgeted the $6,064 to do that. But we need to approve the renewal of that actual contract with them. And finally, ask you to approve an amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding that you approved several months back with the Stroop family with the FHN Morganton LLC as developer. And this is for development on the property at South Sterling Street. And this is an amendment for the MOU that deals with the restaurant. The utility piece of this is going to be handled differently than before.
Do any members of council wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Under new business, we have a consideration of amendment to the Code of Ordinances designating no parking areas on Fleming Place, Bouchelle Street, East Catawba Street, and North Green Street. Sally?
I believe Louis is going to take that one.
Louis, excuse me.
That's okay. Thank you. As you know, we are in the process of obtaining a parking study on parking needs in the downtown area. However, some things can't wait for that since that's several months away. And we certainly hope and expect that the new hotel on North Green Street will be open before we hear the results of the parking study. When it opens, it will obviously cause considerable increase in traffic on the, not so much on North Green Street, but on the streets around that block, namely Fleming Place, the one block of Bouchelle, and East Catawba. And you can see attached in your material and on the screen, the representation of that. North Green already has no parking. What we're proposing is to put in no parking zones along the single block of Fleming Place, which as you know is a very narrow street, all residential. And along Catawba Street, which is really one block, again, residential, quiet residential street, but people will be using that around the hotel. And then the side of Bouchelle that adjoins the hotel site, the other side of Bouchelle is already a no parking zone. And again, because the hotel will have an entrance off Bouchelle, there will obviously be more traffic there as well. So we are simply proposing adding those streets. Oh, and also, excuse me, I should have added, on North Green, from Fleming Place back to Patterson, the only area that was marked no parking was the area right in front of that, the old Brinkley condos. The rest of that, all the way back in front of the laundromat and the bank, has no parking places, but it's not marked no parking. So we wanted to add all of those to deal with the situation around the hotel site.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to amend Section 101 of Appendix I, the city's Code of Ordinances to prohibit parking at all times on Fleming Place and East Catawba Street and on certain segments of North Green Street.
I have a motion to have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
And I would also, since we mentioned while we're having that piercing sound, the parking study, it would be the intention and staff hopes to have a recommendation for that contract award at your September meeting.
Next is consideration of approval to enter into an agreement with North Carolina DOT for construction of improvements along College Street from North Green Street to West Fleming Drive.
That's me.
That's you.
I'm taking it. So this is a project that we have been talking about for quite some time and a project that was really highlighted in the recently completed and adopted Parks and Recreation Master Plan and also the Downtown Master Plan. And that is what we have come to know as the College Street Projects. So College Street has been identified as the street that we would improve and enhance in order to provide biking and pedestrian access through downtown, connecting from Fleming and the bypass area down there all the way to North Green Street. The city has been successful in applying for and receiving a federal grant for that project, and it's an 80-20 grant. We have been awarded $2,649,000, $2,649,600 in federal grant money for this project. And included in the 1920 budget is $662,400 of city funding, which is our required match to that grant. The total project, a little over $3.3 million. It is now time to begin preliminary design and work on that project. And it'll be a little different as you go the length of that road because in some areas, as you all know, we have a lot of asphalt to work with. In other areas, we have less. Down on the end, closest to the bypass, we have the bridge over the railroad and that will be our constraint down there because we will not have the funding to redo that bridge, nor would we get approval from DOT to redo that bridge. In order to do this, we are working with an engineering firm. And we would like to have money released from the state in order to be able to pay them. So our first step is to sign this contract with North Carolina DOT. I would also like to add that as we are going through the planning and the design stages of this project, there'll be several other groups and several folks and other projects on the horizon that will need to be taken into account. We get to do this one time in our lifetime. Those groups include the Burke County Library as they are looking in the next several years at a possible expansion. And they own quite a bit of property along College Street. The History Museum that owns the corner. The Senior Deaf and Blind, which have the apartment building and own some other property across from Kama. And working with them. The Morgan and High School group that is looking at a memorial and a monument and improvements over on that property of some kind. The Recreation Foundation that owns property along College Street. Some private property owners, Kama. All of those groups, the city and the county, as we own the library property together and those kinds of things, need to all come together. And as we're planning for this, we need to think about the future of all of those properties because we get one shot at this. And so we really need everybody to work together and come up with the best designs and how we can create entrances on College Street as those properties develop in a different way than they exist today. We want to design this so that we only have to spend money once and so that we do it correctly.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to enter into an agreement with NC DOT, allowing the city of Morganton to administer an FHWA grant to design and construct a project that will add a multi-use path and sidewalks along the College Street corridor from North Green Street to Fleming Drive.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is the consideration of a reimbursement resolution and award of contract for the design of coagulation, flocculation, and sedimentation process improvement project. Sally?
It's the best name for any project we've ever had. This is at the water plant. And these are the processes by which we clean our water so that we can all drink it. We actually started on this back in 2017. You're noticing all the years, right? Nothing ever gets completed quickly. Lot of planning and then the doing. In this, we looked at what needs to happen to these processes as we continue to make improvements at the water plant to extend the life of that plant and to give us opportunities to continue providing the award-winning water that we do. In 2018, we completed that and have a set of preliminary design documents that we can use. It's now time to take those design documents to full design and to get ready to go to bidding and procurement for this. You will remember that in this budget year, we have $180,000 to do this. And we're asking you to award that in 2020, 21, in our current capital improvement program, would be the construction of the project as it sits today. Obviously, we'll reevaluate that next budget year and see if timing on that has moved. That project is set to be financed. So in order to give us the option, if those bids come in really well when we do that, to pay ourselves back for this design work and charge it out to the project so that the users and the beneficiaries of that pay for that in their water rates over that period of years, we have to adopt a reimbursement resolution. So I'm asking you to consider two things tonight. The reimbursement resolution and then to authorize an engineering services contract with American Company for the rest of the design work and to get us through construction documents.
What's the wish of council?
I move to adopt a reimbursement resolution authorizing the city to reimburse itself from the proceeds of tax-exempt financing for certain expenditures made in connection with the coagulation, flocculation, and sedimentation process improvement project.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Very good, Forrest. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I need another motion, please.
Move to approve and authorize an engineering service contract with American Company for work beginning at 90% design through setup and of the coagulation, flocculation, and sedimentation process improvement project at the water plant in the amount of $180,000.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the consideration of a revolving loan program for the development of restaurants in downtown Morganton. Sally?
This is actually consideration of extending funding to an existing program. Once again, in our master plan for downtown, we have talked a lot about housing, retail, restaurants, and the need for all of that. Our Main Street Advisory Board has been working through the findings in that master plan and working on recommending, as we start to implement, part of the items that that master plan is telling us we need to do. Back, I wish I knew when. Thank you. 2010, we received North Carolina Main Street Solutions Fund money. And at that time, we took $214,255 of state money. And we set up a revolving loan fund that we've been using since then. And we have made loans to restaurants and other retail operations that were either expanding or being created newly in downtown with those dollars. At the time, we set that up as a revolving loan fund. And I'll say again, I've said it probably 40 times in this room, the state did not want us to set that up as a revolving loan fund. They wanted the money spent. And we really felt like we needed to be able to turn that money and as loans got paid back, turn part of that into a new loan to create more opportunities and to help. And that has really paid off in downtown. That fund is down to $5,000 in the repayment of that. Now, I will say that in the first round of these, the way that program was set up, after five years of payments on time, the rest of your loan got forgiven and turned into a grant. And that was part of how we convinced the state to let us do this to start with. This program is different. There would be no forgiveness of the loan. The loan would be the loan, and over the term of the loan, it would get paid back at 3% interest. So, this year, in our budget process, we talked about the need to try to drive some additional restaurant business in downtown. What we are finding is that to redo old buildings and to put a restaurant in there today is a very expensive endeavor. From sprinkling, redoing, kitchen improvements, meeting requirements, it's really difficult for startups especially to do this. So, last stimulus program, and it didn't work. Don't know why, nobody, I mean, we've got some housing going on. It just didn't fit their needs at the time. This year, we talked about trying a restaurant loan program and narrowing the use to restaurants. We have $130,000 in the budget, asking you to approve putting that into this fund and allowing us to open that up and have folks who are interested in this come in. The whole process is lined out for you, the business plan, the review. Would ask that you also appoint a downtown revolving loan review board. Those would be comprised of a person from the 2017 Master Plan Committee, a person from the Main Street Advisory Board, a person from the Downtown Development Association, a resident of the downtown, the municipal service district, and then one person with experience in the financial community. You have before you the names that we are recommending for that. And those would be Ray Benfield as the downtown resident, Keith Suddles from the Main Street Advisory Board, David Martin from Capital Bank as the financial person, Charlotte Idson with the Downtown Development Association, and Hank Dickens from the Master Plan Steering Committee.
So we need two motions. What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve a revolving loan program for the purpose of attracting new restaurants for downtown Morganton.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? My one question, Sally, would be the restaurant would have to be in that municipal district, correct?
It does, yes.
The downtown district?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
The question would be, I mean, when they apply for the loan, could one restaurant get the entire 130? Or is there parameters set?
I think that it's possible that one restaurant could get the entire 130, depending on the loan committee's review. And that kind of sets up your payment plan too, right? Because you're going to gauge that with a reasonable amount of time for the loan. I think that seven years is the maximum of any loan and collateral would be required. And also, when you make the loan, they're required to put in their own dollars too. So it's going to be, which was also a requirement before. So, they would have to be matching those dollars too, which...
It's not my expectation that it would be for more.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sally, this money is available not only for new restaurants, but also available for existing...
That is correct. That looked to an expansion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further...
Correct. Correct.
So they have to meet one of those needs. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. That's a strong aye. The motion passes.
[laughing]
Uh, we have, we need another motion, please.
Motion to appoint the following people to serve as the downtown revolving loan review board, Ray Benfield, Keith Suddles, David Martin, Charlotte Edson, and Hank Dickens.
Have a motion to have a second?
Target.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of appointments for boards and commission. Our first one is the Fireman Supplemental Retirement Fund, three council-appointed and two public safety-appointed. We have, these terms have expired, and we've got people who have agreed to serve. What's the wish of council?
Move to appoint Claude Huffman and Lieutenant Jamie Clark for terms to expire May 21, 2021, and Councilman Chris Hawkins for a term to expire May 21, 2022.
Have a motion? Then a second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I need another motion, please.
Move to affirm the public safety appointment of Captain Isaac Gibson's for a term to expire on May 21, 2021, and Finance Director Karen Duncan for a term to expire on May 21, 2022.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a consideration of appointment to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Mark Miller's term has expired. What's the wish of council?
Motion to reappoint Mark Miller to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board for a term to expire August 5th, 2022.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we need to enter into a closed session to-
Before we do that, may I do one thing?
You may.
So, we forgot to talk about the festival under upcoming events, and we will not be back together again before that happens.
Do you have any of that information available?
I actually do. I, I do. And, and before we do that, because you know, in the paper, in the 50 years ago, I just wanted to say that, you know, things circle around, and it seems like we talk about the same stuff. I don't know if anybody got the chance to read that this time, but in part of it from Jay Gordon Queen, it says, yes, we are in favor of more industry coming to our city. Employees will be coming forth somehow, but to take care of situations like this, we need more houses. Wouldn't a housing project be fine, though? So, here we are in 2019, challenged with the same thing. So, um, I forgot to talk about that earlier, too. So, the festival is coming September 6th and 7th, Friday and Saturday. It will open at noon on Friday, a full lineup of 200-plus arts and craft vendors and great food fair. There's going to be four stages this year. All four stages will have free entertainment. Friday's city stage headliner is the ACDC Tribute Band, actually speaks to my age. Saturday's headliner is country music star Rodney Atkins. And then, for the second year in a row, we have back again the maid competition, which is the Morganton Arts Design and Engineering Competition. Was really cool last year, and if you didn't get to see it, I encourage everybody to come by. So, our middle school and high school students are going to be competing in the Junkyard Challenge. So, they are going to do an onsite design-build competition where each team can only construct with the supplies they've been given. And this is our attempt at engaging our students and getting them involved in critical thinking, design, engineering, and innovation in a way that works toward meeting the needs of our area industry and, and the jobs that are available today. This competition is sponsored by Work in Burke, Continental, Leviton, and the City of Morganton. So, we're really excited about it. The festival ought to be great. Sharon has promised us great weather, so if we don't have it, it will be her fault. Come out and play in the streets.
Thank you, Sally. Next, we need a, a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, Section 143-318, 4A3, and 143-318, 11A7, to consult with the city attorney and hear to reports concerning investigation of alleged criminal misconduct.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've had a motion come out of executive session, I mean, out of closed session. We have one item before us. Sally, briefly, would you want to cover that?
So, don't we make a motion to go back into open session?
I'll, I'll entertain a motion to go back to-
So moved.
In a open session. Second by Forrest. Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have an item considering the authorization for the city attorney to proceed with taking a property at 502 and 504 South Sterling Street by power of eminent domain.
I guess that'll, and this is, as I in, in previously informed you, this is to, simply to authorize proceeding by taking the property at, on South Sterling Street if we are unable to work out any other arrangement with the owners, with the church that owns the property, concerning the absolutely pressing need to replace the, repair and place the storm drains on the property.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to resolve and approve that if the city attorney and city staff are unable to negotiate acquisition of an appropriate new easement or purchase of the properties, then the city attorney is hereby authorized to institute proceedings under the power of eminent domain as provided in General Statutes 40A-1, for the taking of those parcels of real property located at 502 and 504 South Sterling Street owned by First Free Will Baptist Church of Morganton.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any further business coming from council? We are adjourned.